What's up there?
In a concussion.
Wow, what happened?
Uh, done, I got cleaned up by a clock.
Real life gentleman, okay.
Good afternoon, I'm now gonna call a Wednesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners into session. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That auto was effective immediately and until it is rescinded, while the state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, by accident legislature, the auto was extended until March thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So we're live and on Zoom today in a hybrid meeting. I'm gonna ask you, stand and join me in saluting the prayer. I'd like to read.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call the roll, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, President.
Commissioner Collins. Chairman Shay is present, we have a a quorum. And I'll go to item number three, which is minutes of the open session meeting on December seventh, twenty twenty-two. But you have.
Yeah, I move approval of the meeting minutes on December seventh, this chairman.
Second.
What you made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
We just skip to number five.
We're gonna skip to number five, public comment. Director Cronin, has anyone reached out to you for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, I have none. Last call for public comment. Okay, item number six. Full business, we have none. Personnel matters, item number seven, personnel matters for consideration. We have won a resignation uh of a cafeteria worker at the school.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If you wish, uh, through you, a notice of resignation for Christine Christian Masias of Medfield as a substitute cafeteria worker, and that would be effective twelve two twenty-two. So move.
What you made the seconded, all, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number eight, payroll expense warrants, we approve.
Okay, that's, I think that's complete. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have several. Oh, move the following through you, Mr. Chairman, number one, twenty-three dash twenty-four payroll of the county, amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, fifty cents, so moved.
Second.
What you made the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chairman, twenty-three dash twenty-four, thank you.
Welcome.
Parentheses, twelve payroll of the school, move the amount of three hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars, eighty-nine cents, so moved.
Second.
What you made the seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Next, twenty-three dash twenty-four point one, payroll of the county, an amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars, so moved.
Second.
What you made the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next, we have another payroll of the county, twenty-three dash twenty-four point two, uh, now at two thousand twenty-nine dollars, so moved.
Second.
What you made the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Two more, all right, twelve dash two twenty-three, expense of the county, I move the sum of sixty-four thousand, three hundred ten dollars be approved, so moved.
Second.
What you made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And lastly, you have an opera award, uh, line M twenty-three dash twenty-one, opera for the town of Milton, the sum of four hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
What you made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna go back uh to item number four, which is appointment with Paul Bonner, who is our appointee to Norfolk County, your time and board, he has some updates for us. Paul, why don't you come up and sit in the black chair and hello, how are you? Do we have the, do we have?
The black chair.
Anyone else on this matter is with us?
Treasure Blotty.
Yes, good morning, everybody, good morning.
Hey, Treasure Blotty, like, also with us, so.
Morning.
Good afternoon, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John.
How are you?
Mike, it's afternoon.
We all have on Norfolk County. Cause we added a couple, a couple of meetings ago, so.
Uh, what's before you was the new legislation was passed by the legislature during the year, which has been unprecedented before. Uh, it was to adjust the cost of living salaries for the retirees in Norfolk County system. Um, traditionally, the retirement process is it goes to the retirement boards to vote for it, but you cannot go higher than three percent. And what Social Security does, and last year, Social Security went up over five percent, and therefore they amended it to allow the systems to go to the five percent. Let's be clear that every, the retirement system, if somebody was to get a pension in the retirement system, it's not based on what they get as a salary for retirement. So if a person was to retire at fifty thousand dollars, they don't get three percent or five percent or fifty thousand. They can only get it on a salary of fifteen thousand dollars or an allowance of going up by individual boards as they voted, up to the highest of eighteen thousand. So if you got a a pension of fifty thousand dollars, you would only get a five percent increase on eighteen thousand.
On the first day, and Norfolk County is one of the ones that's at eighteen.
All counties are at eighteen.
Oh.
All the counties are at eighteen.
Okay.
Uh, other smaller system, they're at seventeen or sixteen, but uh Norfolk is traditionally, everybody else in the county at eighteen. Three percent has already been granted this year, the legislation was passed and was passed late, and this is in our extension news this, this month. Uh, just come out again, uh, today, legislative update on the increases, newest one was today. Uh, there are fifty-five hundred active employees in Norfolk County, there are thirty-five hundred retirees in Norfolk County. So this would affect the thirty-five hundred retirees in the county. The way the legislature, you all have a copy of it, I believe, the legislation?
I gave it to the packet.
It was in everybody's packet, I believe?
Yeah.
Okay.
It lays out the steps on what will happen for this, and let me make it clear right at the very beginning. This will probably happen again next year because Social Security is going up eight percent, eight point something percent this year, next year. So they'll probably do the same thing next year to stay in tune with what everybody else is doing across the limit. Stay retiree, teachers already got this, it's already been given to other people in the state, but has not been given to anybody in any pension reform system, one hundred and three systems that there are. So it, it, in it, it says the first step is that it has to go before the uh retirement board, and they vote to recommend or accept or non-accept, which the retirement board did. Second step is to go to the commissioners, the commissioners have to vote to support the additional two, three percent has already been given, I think I said that.
And we're kind of, we've, that's been all.
That's already in.
Right, okay.
This is, we're, we're really talking about two percent now, but the, the steps have to be followed, it, it goes to the commissioners for their approval. If the commissioner is approved, then it goes to the eighteen remaining systems that are in the Norfolk County system, because all the towns are not, all towns in Norfolk County and the city are not in our pension system, there are eight that have their own standalone system. So the remaining eighteen have to vote for it, but the process is it goes to the town manager or town administrator who has to forward it to the board of selectmen or the councils for their vote and approval. And the majority vote on that would say that there is an approval. So there are five steps in there that have to be followed, this is step number two, going to the commissioners for their support.
So.
It's funded this year already, money is in the, in the system for it, and the money is in the system for next year, there's no additional cost on the, on the two percent. Okay, it would, you would probably see an increase in the third year.
So that increase, I, I was waiting for that because I knew Director Cronin would be asking that question. So we got a year to get ready.
And we're gonna be, I will be back before you in January uh for the actuarial information that we were talking about before, that was supposed to be on the table last week, but uh, John had asked that we put it out until January, I think, John? Okay. So we'll be in with the actuary, we'll be in with the members of the board.
I think, there's one thing that you said, I thought you said that there are fifty-five hundred retirees.
No, there are thirty-five hundred retirees, uh, uh, thirty-five hundred retirees, fifty-five hundred active, there's nine thousand people.
It only affects retirees.
This is the system, so this includes.
Oh, I understand.
Units of government that are beyond.
Beyond the county.
And that's the other thing, that's the other thing is, there are Michael, correct me, forty-eight or fifty units in the retirement system were the only ones that get the vote on it, uh, the commissioners.
What about like here, the first one I look at here?
Right.
Avon Housing.
Avon Housing Authority, they're not in, but, but Avon is, the town of is.
Eight, oh, yeah, they don't have a vote. None of the housing authorities, mosquito control, the water district.
Charles River pollution.
Don't get it, they don't.
But they're in our unit.
Correct.
So mosquito control, which is state, is in our unit?
Norfolk County mosquito controls in our unit.
Okay, for pension purposes.
For pension.
That means, I know, I'm not soliciting public.
No.
But they don't get a raise, any others do?
No, if they're in the retirement system, they get it, but they don't have a say in the race.
Oh, okay.
They don't have a say in the race.
They're giving the cities and towns a say.
The cities and towns have a say in the race, but the units, all the units in the system don't have a say on it.
Okay.
We didn't draw the legislation, obviously. It needs, it needs some work, but it, it's clear that it's all in the cities and towns that uh, A city and towns get the vote on.
What's the difference in the monetary, though, the number from the three to go to the five? How much more is that gonna, I know it's in the budget, but you know what it would be about?
No, I really think, I don't know.
No.
But if you think of it, the, the raise is, the five percent is only five, if, if everybody was at eighteen thousand, there's some people still getting a pension less than eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
Some of the older people.
Yeah.
Uh, it's five hundred and forty dollars a year for a person.
So where it has, if I could just finish, if we, if we have, it's already in the budget, like you said, so there's no impact.
There's no impact, this year or next year.
But there could be, so it makes me nice to know that number, if you get it for us.
Okay.
For Mr. Cronin, for budget, you know, forwarding it in, it's the budget in there.
So if your retirement number was more than eighteen thousand, you only get the eighteen, you only get the percentage of eighteen thousand, right, okay.
You could have, and there are some high-end people that are in the system of wait, that are getting pensions of eighty thousand dollars or more.
Yeah.
But they don't get the five percent on the eighty, they get five percent on the eighteen.
And what, if we vote this, uh, Mr. Chairman, then what happens if it goes, they'll select the towns, do all of them have to vote it unanimously?
Eighteen, no, not, yeah, it's a majority vote.
So if it doesn't.
It's not even a weighted vote.
That's interesting.
Uh, so understanding no vote is needed by the commissioners.
We need the support to forward it up to the town managers, I think that says it in the highlighted section.
So the vote is a, is a vote of support, not necessarily to adopt anything. I understand.
No, it said here, in the county commissioners, you know, we don't have, don't have a rule on cola, uh, must vote, must vote to accept.
Local approval.
Right, and two-thirds of the towns, that's right, here's my question, see, the two-thirds of the town, not majority, and county commissioners vote. Okay.
And step number two is the county commissioners vote.
Yes, that's right, always a, to vote accept, to accept the cola increase, you're right.
So, you don't accept it, we can't forward it up to the towns.
So I'm just looking at our agenda, um, we have a condition where votes may be taken on any of the content listed here in.
That covered.
So I believe we're covered, um, it's not our understanding when we're gonna be taking a vote today, we're getting.
I'm not really taking a vote today, but I don't. You wanna, you wanna wait one week on the vote?
We have a meeting next week.
Yeah. Does that wreck you, your timeline, Paul, if we, when we come out, vote?
Doesn't affect mine, doesn't affect us.
No, I don't wanna drag it out either, when, when? Anytime.
No. You're the second step, after you vote, we voted to the towns.
Right.
Oh, okay.
We voted.
I'm ready to take a vote next week, I just have to ask. I'm, am I eligible because my wife's a retiree? I think I am because it, it benefits everyone, not just her, I just wanna revisit.
Michael.
I think Mike wanted to.
That's Mike, Treasure Blotty, go ahead.
No, I don't think there's any timelines, Paul, do you? Unless Kathleen might have mentioned something, but I don't have any recollection of that on this one, do you?
It, it, it's gonna take whatever time it's gonna take, but if it is passed, the, the two-thirds majority, it will be retroactive to July first.
Yeah.
Okay, so that saves you.
And when, and the money's in the addition.
Yes, and next year.
And next year. Is it out of the question, I'm premature to figure out what third year is gonna cost us.
That's what I asked.
We're gonna be doing that in January, we're gonna have all the.
Yeah, no, so fiscal twenty.
But we wanna get this off the table.
I need a week, that's all.
Yes, twenty-three set, fiscal twenty-four set, you're saying.
Yeah.
Right, so fiscal twenty-five, we have to figure out, you know, try to guess the number, right. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, table this matter for next week for a vote.
Meeting next week?
Yeah. In the morning.
Meeting next week at ten AM.
Yeah.
We're having crumpets at one if you should be.
Women. Retirement board meeting.
Oh, that's right.
We're having crumpets also.
Okay. Motion to, um, continue this for one week with the intention of voting it next week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other questions of Paul while we have him trapped?
Mike, anything else feel sick?
Paul.
Get better, you don't feel sounder.
I'm here, man, thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Mike.
I feel better, Mike.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks, Paul, thank you.
Calling up John Wallace with us, who you know, but have you met Sam Evans, our new IT director?
For the third time, right?
Oh, okay, this is good, this is good.
He had the first time when he was introduced, and the second time when he was trying to fix the system while the meeting was going on.
That's right.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be here in January, correct, again?
Uh, yeah, the retirement board on the majority will be here. We want to go through the phase end, John?
Yes.
Uh, that's why I was told, so.
That's fine, that's great, I mean, I, I will be, I'll be ready next week.
Okay. See you all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Merry Christmas, happy New Year.
Yeah. Thank you for.
Enjoy your crumpets.
Thank you for your service on the retirement board.
Retirees, thank you too.
One thing, wait here, I noticed the biggest member unit is Stoughton, and only beats some, it only beats Randolph by Stoughton is uh eight million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand a year, and Randolph is eight million, forty-one thousand a year.
They pay more.
Then, then it goes to Franklin Foxborough and Ken, then it drops off.
He asked for that earlier.
Oh, okay, I don't, I forgot that.
It's quite interesting.
All we have is this, right?
That's all I had left off, you had that before, I think.
Oh, did you? Okay.
This is about three weeks old, I, I just carried it forward. This is what I'm operating off of now, it's dated.
But it is, it's crazy because the way they did.
It's dated late in twenty-two.
The other systems don't let us say it.
Okay.
But when, when we come in, we'll show you, we'll show you the comparison to Norfolk County system to the eight systems that are out of the system, they're in the county. That would be the Dedham, the Milton, the Brookline.
Ranger.
No, it would.
That would be interesting to see.
No.
We're gonna have that.
Yeah.
All right, see you all.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, Paul, how many retirees who got left from the county?
Oh, that's a good question.
I know it shrivels every year, but.
That's your homework.
When you were talking about the seven and eight thousand retirees.
Thirty-five hundred retirees.
That's.
Retirees, fifty-five hundred active.
Right.
Right.
Nine thousand.
You said some of the old timers, their pensions only eight and nine or ten.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said earlier.
I bet you a lot of it from long.
When you come back to you, people have less than fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Crazy numbers. But there are people that will back on Joe.
Thanks for keeping us informed, it's good to see you, we make this a practice of every quarter we come in.
All night.
All right.
See what happens?
Will you crumpets every quarter?
We're gonna see you all the time now.
Well, every quarter, he's coming back in January, so.
Yeah, man, that was funny.
Okay, if anyone has any objection, we're jumping around, we're back to number nine. Nine and ten are kinda connected.
Right.
Nine is the report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, and ten is a warrant for approval today of an award, so Director Cronin, nine and ten, you're on.
Very briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, your latest award is before you. This afternoon, Commissioners, this is for the town of Milton, um, four hundred thousand dollars uh, under the economic impact category for the lower geal field reconstruction. Um, research into this particular application indicates this field um, was in very, very difficult shape, uh, located, I believe, the, one of the public schools in Milton. Um, the town of Milton is looking to do a complete renovation of this space and turn it into more vibrant and multi-use recreational um, outlet to the tune of two, two point four million dollars. Um, the town will be using um, its own resources for two million of this project. This afternoon, you're asked to help advance four hundred thousand dollars so that they can put this particular project out to bid, and very briefly, as the project description reads, the field as it stands is no longer a safe field for the level of use it gets. In the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, sports season, the programs that primarily use this space were canceled because of COVID. A new field would bring numerous sports to be played in healthy and safe environments, sports teams will use the space for football, soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, gathered football and rugby, both the high school and the town's youth groups will be using this field. Again, this particular um, request follows under the economic impact category, strong, healthy communities, um, as well as neighborhood features. And I think you understand this is the of the tenth award for Milton.
Yeah. Milton's been very, very active.
Okay, any questions about town of Milton Award today?
Well, you explained it well. Indirectly, it's like a recreation program, right?
It is, promotes outdoor healthy living.
I think. Excellent. You need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we grant to the town of Milton the sum of uh, four hundred thousand dollars uh, in opera grant, uh, the uh, grant is for, in the category of economic impact uh, for strong and healthy communities, we put towards a field that'll be used by many, many groups of young and old in the town, and we congratulate them on their active participation in our, in our program.
Second.
What you made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That is all I have this week on American Rescue Plan, it's true.
Okay. Bid openings, number eleven, we have none today. Number twelve, Montech Awards, we have none. Number thirteen, October twenty twenty-two trial balances for approval, it's in our packet, it's dated ten, ten, ten thirty-one twenty-two. Which will catch us, catch us up. The trial balance is one hundred eighteen million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty cents. Any questions? I know assistant treasurer Dior is on along the treasure body. So if you have any questions?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sometimes we do that, I will tell Joe Doria, if he's on the call, oh, I hope he is.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes he'll say there's different, you know, flags for us or things of that sort, I know, obviously, a bulk of this is because of the opera money, we know that, but um, how does this compare? Joe, any idea of trending in terms of last year at this time, are we look, are we looking?
Hi, yes, Commissioner, um, let me just call it up quickly, um, it's, our receipts are a little bit down from last year, but not too bad. And then our expenses are running close to the same as last year. Um, overall, for the general fund, we're looking, you, um, we're three percent up, up actually on revenues. And that's mainly because we got the um, full payment from the state for um, the jail share retirees' costs, pension costs. Um, expenses were running about twelve percent above last year. Obviously, everything's going up, electricity and such.
Okay. Like, more or less in the same range, nothing?
Yes.
No, okay. Okay, just one check, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions, Director Cronin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just briefly for the Commissioners view, um, I believe it's on page three of this report, you'll see uh, the trial balance, uh, reveal all the revenue sources. One item that we are keeping a very close eye on is the registry deeds excise, which is budgeted at four point five five million dollars. As uh, Joe D just pointed out, we've collected thirty-three point three percent year-to-date, which is on target for that particular category. Um, the fact in, in this case is, I believe, Joe, that particular um, revenue source has been exceedingly generous in the last couple of years, uh, going past our projections. Uh, this year, we're, we're so far meeting that projection, which is adequate to meet our expenditure needs, but right now, we don't see a very large surplus developing there, is that safe to say, Joe?
That's correct, it's also the registry, since they turn their money over to us after the end of the month. Um, so for the registry, that's only through, really through September, so we don't have the October numbers in there. So at, you know, three months, you know, we should be at twenty-five percent, we're at thirty-three. You know, so we're running a little ahead there, I think, right now.
Little bit of a buffer there, but we're not, we are gonna be keeping an eye on that because we do expect this particular source to be down from last year by the time we get to the second half of the fiscal year, so just a point of interest, we are very concerned about where these revenues land with the um, slowdown in the housing market.
I think I might be optimistically surprised, though, because even though the market is slowing, it hasn't come to a halt, not yet, the people are still selling, and the values are still high, that's gonna help us out. The value of the homes is what's gonna keep the revenues up there, that's probably gonna change in end of the year or so. That's when we have to really be careful, in fact, Register Donald put out a newsletter about the sales activity, and he noted that sales have dropped off, but the revenues are still okay because of the price of homes. Now, we'll, it's a caution flag, certainly, like I said, probably next year, we're looking at that, we're preparing, it's gonna be something to look at, but we may, you know, maybe skin through it.
That particular revenue source, Commissioner Stady, has been extraordinarily strong over the last two fiscal years.
I don't know.
To the point where it developed a very high surplus and.
Right.
So far, we don't see evidence that it's going to approach what we've seen in the past few years.
Right, no, point taken, I got you. All right, so you made a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions?
In this case, the treasurer informed, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the treasurer informed, the Commissioners merely need to accept the report.
Okay.
Vote to accept.
All right. I'd move that we accept the trial balance as presented by the treasurer, and uh in this format, dated trial balance of ten thirty-one twenty-two.
Second, what you made is seconded to accept the October trial balance dated ten thirty-one twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, it is unanimous.
Okay.
Director Woods, October trial balance. Number fourteen, report from the RSVP director on your holiday drive, Robert.
Hi, Robert.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
All right.
Very good to see you, so I am here to give you an update on the holiday drive, but briefly, first, I wanna give you an overview of where we are with the program going into the new year. Um, for the holiday, we're sending gasoline gift cards to our volunteers to continue to help defray the costs, especially for those who are driving. We are working toward having a, a definite veteran pinning ceremony in the spring, and also in the spring, we will be beginning, RSVP will be beginning its thirty-third year with a new three-year grant cycle. So this uh, holiday drive, this is our sixth holiday drive season. And uh, we continue to enlist more collection sites. Uh, you probably have the flyer in front of you, or have certainly seen the list of about forty personal care items that we are looking to collect, last year, we had about seventy-five hundred items collected. Uh, looks like Bill is gonna be sharing that. So in addition to having our drop-off site here at our office, the Dedham and Medfield Senior Centers, Norfolk and Walpole Senior Centers, the Wamif Veteran Service Officers as well are uh going to be serving as sites, the Sheriff's Department is doing their own collection, uh, Avon Council on Aging is delivering things to Wamif. We have been advertising in the Dedham Times and in the Patriot Ledger. I am now wanting to, this is really, I appreciate John Cronin's initiative to really put out the word more possibly to the Norfolk County offices who want to donate any items that we will then distribute to veterans throughout the country via Cape Cod Cares for our troops. So the second week of January, we will be care of, Chris and I will be caravanning down the items along with a couple of our volunteer board members to Cape Cod Cares for our troops, we meet at the Dunkin' Donuts right near the Sagamore Bridge, and we will relay probably upwards of seven thousand personal care items.
One of my favorite stops on the way.
Good, and we treat everybody to Dunkin' Donuts who helps out. So that's the report, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions, and again, I'm hoping that uh, any. Any department heads that are hearing, uh, and then perhaps we could send a reminder email to. Some of the other departments today for people who do want to contribute.
Great, and any questions? It, it's, it's through the holidays, but. The fifteenth is the, the last day, or is that the day you pack up and take it away?
That's the day we pack up.
Uh. For the second week in January.
Well, people could donate through the end of the year. And. We already are probably going to have to do some pickups early for, uh, some of the collection sites that are. Overflowing with items, and, and we're gonna, gonna just store them. Uh, but then we're going to collect them. Again, the first or second week of January and, and bring them on down. That's it.
Great. Any questions, Robert?
You should check, the container's getting full up here. Take a look when you get a chance.
Yeah. It, it fills right up.
Well, have you been, it sounds like, uh, Commissioner State, you've been adding some things perhaps?
Could be. There we go. What a Dunkin' Donut gift cards.
I'll take a look. I'll take a look. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Watching everything get filled up.
Thank you, Robert.
Number fourteen, number fifteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I would like to thank Robert Day. He and Chris run a great program. They touch a lot of different. Spaces in Norfolk County. This particular drive, uh, really does offer quite a. Quite a haul of, uh, donated care materials for our troops, and, um, they do a great job. So thank, thanks again. Uh, just a couple of housekeeping issues. Um, first, I want to announce that the user's report, um, which is before the commissioners for their interest. Uh, will be re- revealed and released to, um, employees this week as promised. Um, this particular report shows that. Uh, individuals with a certain balance on their personal days and vacation days. Are allowed to carry over up to fifteen days, um. If they are not otherwise controlled by a collective bargaining agreement. That fifteen-day mark. Was, uh, defined by policy by the commissioners last March second. Twenty twenty-two, I should say. Um, so Michelle has put together this report, and it will go out to the departments, uh, this week to inform employees. Of how much of a balance they have to use before June thirty.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-three.
Uh, lose by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, trying to give people a little bit more time to, um. Use their time. Get them to settle. Um, in addition, um. The calendar that went out last week had a couple of questions about. Christmas, uh, Eve Day in twenty twenty-three, as well as Christmas Day twenty twenty-three. Um, because Norfolk County observes Christmas Eve Day as a holiday, it will fall on Sunday. And because Christmas Day, uh, will fall on a Monday. Um, we are going, the, the, the language at the bottom has to be read carefully, but effectively, when you, um. Get the benefit of having Christmas Eve Day off, you would normally have Monday off. Because it's a holiday. You now are going to be looking at a holiday in the way of collecting that day. So. As the note says, just encourage people to read it. The alternative day shall be taken, you get a floater. Uh, within sixty days on a day approved by the department manager. So, because.
That's next year, right?
That is correct, because in twenty twenty-three, on this new calendar that was released, you have Christmas. And Christmas Day, right on a Sunday, Monday, um, circumstances lead to a floater. That's how it will shake out. Uh, just want also to call attention, Commissioner State, you asked last week about the meeting with District Attorney Morrissey's office relative to the OBOA. Um, grant program that'll be held at ten AM. On December nineteenth, DA's office afforded you and commissioners. Uh, Shay, the agenda, we will post for you for that day, just to. Um.
Monday morning, right?
I believe it is.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Um. For the commissioners' interest, I forwarded along to you yesterday, a copy of the agenda, uh, relative to the department ed meeting that we held. It was well attended, good interaction with the department heads. We. Went over, hosted different issues and kept everybody up to speed on what's cooking in County. Commissioners, I just wanted to also call your attention to some, some upcoming dates and events. Um. Next week will be December twenty-first. Um. Last week, you put off. The possibility of voting for a cost of living allowance for non-union individuals within Norfolk County. That vote will be before you next week, uh, for reconsideration. As will the elements of the upcoming supplemental slash transfer slash capital requests. That will be, um, thus put forth to the advisory board now on January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Next week's meeting will start at ten AM. Earlier than expected, so that, uh. We can carry on with our holiday event following that meeting. Um, the following week, I have some vacation time coming. It's up to the commissioners if you wish to schedule a meeting on twelve twenty-eight. And finally, uh, the following week, after the new year, January fourth. Um, we will be obviously having an advisory board meeting that night. I hope it's providing the commissioners with fiscal updates relative to activity in FY twenty-three. So overall, that's basically the view ahead. I just want everybody to understand there's a little bit of a. An agenda next week, followed by a week possibly not meeting, and then right back in after the new year.
Um. And the advisory board is still at the school.
It is.
Can you support? Okay.
Yes. Six o'clock for the Penn comm, six thirty for dinner, seven o'clock for the, uh. For the, uh, for me. Uh, and just the last note, um, as Commissioner State and Commissioner Shay. Know, um, participated in an interview with, uh, Business View Magazine, which is producing. Uh, a marketing tool piece for us as well as them. That'll be revealed sometime in January. Norfolk County is joining several other communities in Massachusetts, including a couple from Norfolk County. And taking advantage of this free offer to help promote the work that you've been doing. Um, I received a call this past week from, um, one of the vice presidents of the craft group in Foxborough. Uh, they had been contacted by Business View. To, uh, consider appetizing in the magazine. I went over, uh, the project, um, it's, um. It's, it's used by Norfolk County, and they were enthusiastic about helping to support, um, Norfolk County. So, uh, forward along to them some. Contact information, other material to, uh, for them to review, but, um. Be nice if the craft group could join as they did when the town of Foxborough went through the same exercise.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are all I have. It's up to you.
Okay, any questions of Director Cronin's?
Yeah, a couple, uh.
Go ahead.
Chairman, maybe a quick follow-up too. So I'd be open to having. Uh, a week where we don't meet on the twenty-eighth, which Director Cronin will be here. Uh, it might be a nice break for all of us, unless there's something really urgent. And then continue our meeting that we did, continue to talk, continue to be. Uh, unless it's necessary, it's, you know, that's twelve twenty-eight, right? You're saying?
Right.
Commissioner Shay, I'll probably, I'll probably. I'm going to say probably resume anyways, definitely, but. We haven't been.
Commissioner Shay, if I could, uh, with the benefit of Joe D on the call, I was going to make sure.
Their end of year.
That the treasurer doesn't have any other end of year issues.
I can still. Joe, I'm, I'm amenable, I might not be able.
Joe, any?
Tell them next week.
Any end of year concerns that a, um, lack of a meeting on the twenty eighth might cause?
Uh, the only issue is without a meeting, we won't be able to pay any warrants that week. Counts payable warrants, payroll will go through.
Well, we've worked around that in the past.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
I can't tell you now, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure I can take, we can, we can decide about it by the twenty-first.
Okay.
So we don't announce it on the twenty-first. Um. We'll, we'll keep that in mind. I think it's a good idea.
Back on two of the things that I could, Mr. Chairman. Um, opera. Seems to be slowing down, which is probably right. The season, people are busy doing other things right now. Um, you mentioned. The beginning of next year, you're going to start notifying some of those towns that have already been awarded grants. And then maybe look so we can get the money back. The clawback material for us, the money's not being used up.
Yeah. Um, the, the message was, um. Regarding revenue loss, Commissioner. So the revenue loss is a ten million dollar benefit that we've distributed based on population at every community.
Mm-hmm.
Except the top three. Um, we received a more generous annual contribution. So for the remaining twenty-five, they, they received an allotment. We have since learned. Uh, when we distributed that money, that several communities aren't going to use that revenue loss benefit that's been allocated to them, approximately half a dozen. Which means their, their value can be put back into the pot. Redistributed to the remaining communities and give them more access to revenue loss. Um, funding, which they all strongly desire, as you probably know. So in January, we were going to validate, um. Which communities are opting out of that benefit. Recalculate the distribution and send it back out. It, it, it is likely to increase. The distribution of the revenue loss category by some amount of money for the communities. It's not a ton. Uh, but it will be a benefit that many of them will welcome, and it's just reusing the resources early so that they can make use of it.
Okay.
But I know what you, you started to suggest, they, another exercise that will be. At least six to twelve months down the road, which is to evaluate.
Okay.
A larger pool of funding, who's not using their award generally, and then redistribute requiring that back. That's an exercise all counties are talking about doing. Probably mid to late twenty twenty-three.
Alright, actually indirectly. With our new five-time process again, and looking at, looking at next year, looking at the new year. Um. Still don't see some of those towns coming forward. Where's, where's Wamif then? Does Wamif apply at all for anything?
I don't know if it's over yet. I think they did.
They did.
I guess, but I, I can't remember. I thought it's.
Me, Mr. Chair, uh, Wamif has an eight hundred thousand dollar award in the pipeline.
Currently.
Yeah, they got a huge amount of money coming to them.
Yeah.
I mean.
Many communities, including Quincy, Brookline.
What happened at Brookline? Uh, we came in.
Yeah, we.
I'm not asking you, I'm just curious. Brooklyn came in, met with us, with Tommy, and then what happened? Where's, where's the application?
Uh, there's been some turnover there, uh, but yes, we have reached out to all of the, um, communities that have not yet applied. We did get some feedback. We'll do it again.
Okay.
Keep back.
Alright. Just curious, that's all. Just wondering.
No, and it's a phenomenon that kind of, you know, makes you wonder, but honestly, Commissioner, um, based on what we hear from Plymouth County. During our monthly meetings, it's not unusual. Um. They are, they are way behind in, in Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Treasurer O'Brien believes it's because. Many of the communities still had cares money that they had on board. Well. The cares money had to be expended by September thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, a year ago. Um, but for some reason, Plymouth County. Communities are not rushing into this program.